I'm calling meeting one thousand six hundred and thirty-six to order at six oh four P M. On October twenty seventh, two thousand, twenty thousand, two, twenty twenty-two. All right, and I will take a motion.
Move to go into executive session for the following purposes. Pursuant to M G L chapter thirty A section twenty-one A seven. To comply with or act under the authority of any general or specific special law. Or federal granted aid requirements specifically. M G L chapter thirty A section twenty-two F M G with regard to the review. Approval and or consideration for non-disclosure of executive session minutes. As listed in the table attached to this agenda and reconvene in an open session.
Second.
All right, so we have. Second from. Arthur and Martha from Jeff. All right. So. This uh meeting is required by law. Um Dennis and I met. Last week to go over the executive session minutes and before they get released. We have to get permission from you. To do so, so in your package.
We need a vote to be on the session.
Yes, okay, so I will take a vote to go into executive session.
No, we just.
You have to read it. I have to read it yet.
No, we have to roll call to go out. We never took a vote.
Oh, take the vote, I'm sorry, Jeff.
Yes.
Danell.
Yeah.
Laura.
Yep.
Jim.
Yes.
Nancy.
Yes.
Art.
Yes.
Jane and yes, and Dennis.
Yes. And Bonnie.
Oh, goodie, Bonnie's here.
Yeah.
And Bonnie, all right.
Thank you, Laura.
And Sarah is absent today. So we have nine people in attendance. All right. I would like to uh reconvene uh. School committee meeting one thousand six hundred and thirty-six at six thirty P M. And we will go on to item three, which is standing reports. And I will take a motion to approve the minutes of school committee meeting number one thousand six hundred and thirty-five.
Second.
Okay, so any comments? Or corrections?
I feel like Bonnie's the one with.
Bonnie comes, do you have corrections for the minutes?
I actually am embarrassed to say no.
All right.
I didn't review.
I didn't either.
Yeah.
Let's take a moment then.
Yeah, I agree. Well, they're quite long. We can, we can.
We can multitask.
I feel very beautiful.
Are we having a lot of fun?
I'm gonna give you two minutes on this, so no giggling.
We should consider. Madam Chair, I request we call a question.
Fair enough. All right. Uh I will take a a vote on. The minute. Get back here. Danell.
Yes.
Jeff. Jeff.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Him.
Yes.
It's just. Art.
Yes.
Bonnie.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
And Jane, all right, the minutes. We have a second set of minutes to approve um. And I will um.
Oh, that's not in the subcommittees now. They'll go to three D in the conference.
Yeah, so I'll take a motion. Um to release. Who wants to read that?
Um I move to release the executive session minutes that were approved at the executive. Minute review subcommittee meeting on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Okay.
I assume you've been to the least they want to reset from the release.
Yeah, yeah, right. All right, um. Any discussion? All right, all the one to the roll call vote of all those. Favorite Jeff.
Yes.
Danell.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Him.
Yes.
Yes, Art.
Yes.
Bonnie.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yeah.
And Jane, yeah. And the second motion.
To not release the following executive session minutes that were approved at the executive minute. Review subcommittee meeting on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. That'd be special school committee meeting ten twenty-three of twenty nineteen. Meeting fifteen and seventy-one executive session from ten twenty-four, twenty nineteen. Meeting fifteen ninety-two executive session from ten twenty-one, twenty twenty. Meeting sixteen twelve executive session from uh September ninth, twenty twenty-one. And negotiation meetings. Negotiation meetings from the first of um. Yeah, I'm sorry, January tenth, twenty twenty-two, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, February eighth, twenty twenty-two. And March ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All right, Art, any discussions? Okay, roll call vote, Jeff.
Yes.
Danell.
Yep.
Laura.
Yes. Yes.
Did you say yes, Jim?
Yes.
Nancy.
Yes.
Arthur.
Yes.
Bonnie.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
And Jane, yes, okay. So we have taken care of those minutes. All right, and I. Didn't see any miscellaneous correspondence. So I think we can go on to student representative report and we had a student representative possibly that. No, they're not ready yet, right?
I don't, I don't know.
She, I think she was saying when you start.
But do you know?
That's the minute taker.
No. Oh, he was the minute taker.
It could be Leslie, I mean, right?
It's Leslie.
Well, I just was in there, but.
Yes, but Leslie's here.
Okay, that's who we want to hear from?
I'd like to.
Uh I'm gonna recognize Leslie, you can unmute. Hi.
Hi, sorry, um we just got a little confused because we thought there was like a different length, so sorry, Emily, but. I'm here to give the school updates.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'm the student representative for the sophomore class. And well, recently we had our government elections and they went really well this year. Um it was like a very easy process and it was like under control the whole time. As well, this week we had our spirit week. Uh which ends tomorrow as like our blue and gold day. And clubs have started again, um such as F F A, they did their petting zoo recently. Um interact has done truck day and then tomorrow they're doing trunk or treat as well. Um other clubs like the New Day Club have started again, um Model U N. Um colleges have come to visit a lot for students, especially juniors and seniors. And overall, um it's been a very good start to the school year. Um. And I just like really good things have been happening. Sports teams have also been doing really well and. Um academics are good right now, I believe, for the most part. Um so it's like the main things that have been going on at our school.
All right, uh does anybody want to ask a question? Uh I'll recognize Bonnie.
Um is the, has there been a person named yet to serve as a student representative? School committee or a rotating couple of individuals?
Um yeah, so usually, um like in years before Jessica Canby would join. Uh but um I'd like to like step forward and hop a little bit more. And she's supposed to be here tonight, but it's just like the link thing got like a little confusing for us. But she will be here for the majority of the meetings, if not her, then I will be, or sometimes there will be other. Um of the student representatives coming to the meetings as well.
Great, then.
Well, it's delightful to have you and um I hope you enjoy your time as representative. I just want to add that. The student representative uh. From two thousand and four is now working as the outreach uh of the um internship coordinator for the early college. So she's. She reminded us that she used to be the student representative, that's kind of a fun story.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
Anna, thank you so much.
Do we have a student spotlight?
We do not tonight.
Okay. Uh do we have public? I don't see any on the screen there. So we don't have public comment. And I'm not sure, I I didn't notice warrants either.
Uh no, we don't have a report from the business managers.
Okay. Well, that's moved us along. So then we go to the business with the district member towns. And we. I'll just open it up to the representatives. Who have been. At meetings for us to make any comments because. Bonnie is the only one who is. As she says, is stubborn enough to stay there and uh. Which we very much appreciate, but. This will be your, I think your last opportunity to say what you want to say to. Your committee fellow, my committee members, so I'm just gonna ask Laura, do you have anything you wanted to say?
I don't have any huge updates since our last meeting, I just feel like it's important for people to follow along with the process. Regardless of whether you're a representative sitting on the regional school district planning board, a school committee member or a member of the public. It's just really important to engage. I feel that that's just important to say continuously. And and a lot happens in those subcommittee meetings, so. If you're on that too.
Uh Danell, do you have anything you wanted to say?
Um no, stay involved, let's see, I we had a full regional planning board meeting on. That Tuesday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Day. And they um were discussing the makeup of the next, the future school committee. Should. The districts combine. So that was an interesting discussion on how the makeup would be there. Um I had to hop off at the end, so I don't know, we didn't vote on anything. But it was just kind of put out that there's a couple of different models on what, how the the committee should be made up. So we're moving right along and we're trying to figure things out that way. Um. No, that's just the.
Yeah, and we settled on November ninth for the facilitated discussion. That's notable as well, I don't know if that's open to the, I assume that's open to the public?
That you, I wasn't sure whether it would be because. Um I was getting the impression that. That Lucy was hoping that it would not be. Uh it would have to be somehow contained discussion wise so that it didn't break open meeting law, so I don't know. Any workshop. It it's a workshop, but um.
Well, that that explains why we had to vote to bring. School committee members that wouldn't officially be on the board anymore in that all tracks, so, okay.
Honey. Well, as the stubborn one. I'm really going to miss. Assuming I get re-elected to the school committee.
Yeah.
I'm going to miss. Um having you guys, it really feels very lonely at those meetings. Um. I hope that it is a public meeting.
I do.
Um I know both Jane and I spoke to the person who was going to be the facilitator. And I thought he would, his questioning was really good, I mean, he really. Wants to hear our issues and um. He would like to have as many of the issues. Prior to the ninth. So it helps him determine how he's going to facilitate this discussion. I wished him a lot of luck. Because I really feel the division has not closed at all. Um. And it, I I just wonder how open. You know, everyone's going to be, and I hope they will. To your point, Laura, um. It the re, you will all become panelists. As opposed to anybody else who's signing in, who would have to wait to be upgraded, so that. That's the, you know, the reasoning for those individuals. Um. You know, I I. Emphasized with the facilitator. When there's a token, that. We did not enter into this whole process. Being anti-merger. And I was really clear, I said, given the impression that we came, I said. I could go through our school committee. Maybe one, maybe two people. Are and are anti-merger, but everybody else went into this. I'm not pointing any fingers, um everybody else went into this very. Open-minded, everything looks collaboration. Looked at options and felt very disappointed at what was promised in March when the report came out. Has not happened. That there was supposed to be an exploration, it was supposed to be a baseline. I also brought up that I really believe that during this facilitated discussion, I mean, I. Shop a load, I said there had to be addressed the way our teachers and administration have been treated.
Oh.
Uh did you as well bring that?
No, I'm glad you brought that up, I I think one of the things that. We've. Fallen down on is being more specific because. We have incidents that we can. Point to and particular items that are of concern to us, so. Bonnie and I agreed that we would put together a list of specific things to send to the facilitator and also. To um the leadership and if you, anyone on the committee wants to please write to us to add to that, that would be very helpful.
Because there are things, because he's never been in a home with us. Though he came up with while we were talking to some, what I think are good techniques for how to approach this to our session. Um. He was not aware of so many of the different issues. I brought up the whole thing of feeling that we're being absorbed. I brought up the issue of thinking. I am not against, you know, Peter Dillon and and Burt Schittles getting what they're after, I don't want to. To hurt, I said, we just wanted the fact that everything is being shoved. Into the main warrants. And what it means, so I brought up examples of how long it took us to redo assessments. Um I brought up the fact that, look, it's now November. We still want to have this new transportation report. Okay. And we're operating moving ahead. Um the whole issue of you had to look at page one thirty-four of the extended report. To realize, because he said to me, well, people are telling me it's the cost savings. I said, well, the cost savings are anticipated, they said two to three million dollars between the two districts. I said, but if you look at page one thirty-four of the report, that's based upon twenty or twenty-two children being in a class. Neither of our districts have that.
I'm gonna recognize.
So I have a question.
Want to end one other thing.
Let me ask my question first, because I think this will, uh this this might be helpful. Um I I realize that you guys didn't, but are these meetings recorded?
Yes.
All right, so uh you probably don't have timestamps. But if you have approximate timestamps, I mean, this is what we've had to do when we've had.
Oh, right. Yeah, that's what, I I have that for where I was insulted.
Yeah, but I'm gonna say, you, but if you have those, because um like I said, I've had to.
Right.
I'm sure this comes as a surprise, where I've had, I've had issues um in uh occasionally with the, rarely, but I've had a couple of issues with students. And um you know, all meetings, once we went online, all meetings were recorded. And um the timestamps were my, the timestamps were my friend. Um and it also meant that I didn't have to explain myself.
Yeah.
I could state myself clearly and say, this is, but this is the example.
Yeah, but see, he's not going to be going to that, so he's relying on what we give. The other really big.
But I think the examples would be helpful.
Yeah, if we need that as support and doing it your way, Nancy. I think would really work getting.
Yeah, I think it's future session.
I brought up the fact that they budgeted this building at a hundred million. And um. I mentioned the fact that our superintendent has experience in this area. There's no way this building's going up for a hundred million, I brought up Vermont just recently. Where it's a hundred and sixty million is what was passed for a new comprehensive with vote tech program. Plus thirty-nine million for remediation, and I brought this up before, and eleven million for something else. So though he lives in Vermont, his kid goes to Graylock. Um and he's got baskets, but he said, yeah, a hundred million.
Yeah.
Isn't, so I think whatever you can need to him, it will help him shape. How he's going to try to bring around some success.
So I want to bring. To your attention the. Rather. Alarming aspects of the regional agreement that are being brought up and um not discussed yet. And this is where. Those of us who are good at reading those things. Need to be able to chime in because one of the aspects that we haven't discussed, we got bogged down on this, how many from each town? Business about people being on the. On the. The new school committee, but there's a proposed transitional committee which. As written would be appointed by. Select board members and these appointed people would be hiring the new superintendent. Rather than the new school committee that was elected. For the new district. So there are things like that that really need to be aired and. One of our jobs, I I'm gonna keep doing even though I won't be on the committee, is to try to do plain speaking about this with everybody I meet in the supermarket. What I see at the library, wherever, there, people are gonna run away from me whenever I'm coming because. This is too complicated for the voters to understand and. I would hate for people to be voting on something that's contrary to our values. And without really knowing what they're doing, so.
And if if you read it carefully. The transition committee has the power. To close a school. If the numbers work. In terms of this transition committee. Then I could, I mean, this is.
Yeah, so.
Hyperbole, we could wind up. Not having all the schools we have during the transition period.
So I think. Yeah, definitely.
It's interesting that point that you make rhetorically, even as of recently, the chairperson from the school planning board said, uh no schools would be closed.
Oh, yes, yes.
Um so there's double speak and.
Yeah, so.
It's problematic.
Yeah, so we'll, we will, we'll see, uh I will say that um. Lucy Prashker did come to the visioning session at Simon's Rock last night, showing real interest in our um. Early college high school and I was in the, in the. Discussion group that she was in and she asked really good questions and. Once she understood what we were doing, I sensed that she was really impressed. And it just goes to an in-person meeting where you can have a conversation with a real human being. Leads to a completely different outcome than being talked at on a, through a screen, so. I think. If I was going to mention in my. Anything else, because I was gonna go to my. My chairman's report, which I had planned to write. A beautiful one that you could all look at later. Uh which I didn't do because. My main chairman's report was how much I appreciate you. All of you and all the work that you've done. And being that I am a Jewish mother and cooking is everything. I thought I would thank you that way. And I also was told by Jeff that what were you gonna get plates this year? So what I did, because anybody who served four years or more gets a plate now. Okay, those people who don't serve for four years don't get a plate, so I'm just saying. Uh I'm sorry if you're not running for reelection, those other of you. So um. They're a little different than last time, because I was a little bit sort of hurried, so this is yours. This is Bonnie's. This is Bart's, so that's, no, this is Danell.
Yeah, that's that.
Uh and Jeff blew Dennis. Okay. So um. On the score of being appreciated and making this job doable. I just want to comment on what a crisis we're in in terms of getting volunteers. And. I don't know what can happen to this particular school committee to role model how to make it easier to be on a school committee. Whether there'll be less meetings or less subcommittees. So that people are not finding they're busy every night of the week. Or that they can know that they're always gonna be working on one night a week. We we talked about that in the beginning, like like four years ago, and it wasn't feasible, but I really worry. That it's time to evolve into a place that people want to to serve because they think they can. That they can fit it into their lives and the planning board has had a very negative impact because. Six of the eight ones originally from the eight towns are not running for reelection, that's six out of eight. It would be, it's not a cause and effect scientifically, but it really appears to me that it adds. A burden which we have mentioned many times and. I think it's, it's a crisis because we really need good people to serve. So I just um. Just wanted to say that publicly and I also hope that um we, those of us who are stepping off will continue to contribute. Because we're knowledgeable and some committees are going to be. Hard to reconstitute because many of the members, like the buildings and grounds, for instance, um is gonna need new members, so. I for one feel we, we could volunteer to be helpful, we can't vote. But we could help orient new people, because it's a big job to pass on what we. Learned for so long. And I also want to thank Beth who didn't get a plate, I'm planning on different things for administration. But um. I think uh the dedication of our administration. And the love that's in this district, the culture here is different, we're here for the love of we have of children and what we, and we care about. And I think everybody here has shown that and it's been a pleasure to. Be part of that and it really is maybe a little. Too touchy feely for other people, because this is a business meeting, but I'm sorry for what motivates us as kids, so. Thanks, Beth, for setting an example and she is setting a little bit of a high bar for hard work, so I think we just have not, we have to realize that we can't be best. And we can just only do what we can do. So that is my report.
Comment.
Yes.
A major thank you to you because. You have gone above and beyond, I guess it's the Jewish mother and you. Coming out all the time. Um. And I. Think of a lot of ways how you look out for the members of the committee. Um is unique. And I really do hope that you do what you plan to remain involved, particularly in ways that you stated. It's going to be really hard losing the three. It's going to be really hard losing the three parents on the school committee. I mean, I remember how to nail how you got involved, how your wife beat you. But it was so wonderful being able to test ideas. And, and to be able to get that type of an input. And it always has been a major difference. And um. I'm, I'm sad that, and I know all of your obligations and I know getting, dealing with all you had to do on the regional planning board probably. In no way made life any easier with this. But. I know we really appreciated the perspective and the talents and the talents were not only as parents. So you really have made a major difference for our school committee. And I hope, you know, you are major people to get other parents involved.
Yeah.
We cannot move ahead if we don't, it can't be, you know, somebody lecturing at fifteen people. You got to get people informed um and, and make that decision. And a major compliment, I'm taking advantage of this. Lion King Junior. The involvement was so beyond phenomenal. And it, it's really Jane goes to what you say about our culture. I mean, we're talking hacked.
Attended play, I think, ever that's at a school.
What we so needed, I mean, the parents came up for, you know, we, we had people coming from all over. And that is who we are, you know, we, families who had nothing to do. Were coming. When I put it on Facebook, people were saying, oh, I know that gets graduated, whatever, I'm coming, I'll be there. So.
Yeah.
Thank you, Charles, for whatever you did to pull that off all over. Um, it, it was phenomenal and it is. That culture that we really have to, I want to do what we can to save. And Jane, thank you.
Uh, yeah, Jim.
Yeah, I have my hand up. Um. I want Jane to, I just want you to understand, Jane, that I know your phone number. So it's not like you're going to, to be completely not, not involved in this. Because I still don't know what's going on. Okay.
Well, I have been working here for forty years, so I.
I just want to address, yes.
I, I've sort of, I can't do anything cold turkey and uh, I, so. At least I'll be able to have dinner at home with my husband every night. That's gonna be quite the pleasure.
With Larry, that's gonna be a pleasure.
Well, he's the one that's going.
Jane, I want to address something and I think that um, Kurt Lindy and Chris will agree with me that, how old are your kids?
Uh, forty, they're being forty and forty-two um, on Saturday.
Alright, so forty-two minus six is thirty-six years. Um, I've watched. And you guys have been part of the transition. I'm gonna cry about everything. People, you piss poor people off. You drive people nuts, but you really, you and that grade of parents. Are brought fucking signs, excuse my language, who brought art, who said, be smart. And to watch the transformation over thirty-six years. And have my kids go through it and see Lindy here, so you guys here. And I, I'm not the person who says, for all the times people wanted to do you in and take you and shake you. The district would not be what it is without your having been so freaking ballsy and. And Jewish mommy. And I think the district, um, yeah, I think as a parent, I, thank you.
Thanks a lot, Nancy.
Sorry. I didn't know when to say this as well. Um. No, no, this is, I think, important about your leadership style and everything. Um, you, um, I think smartly at the beginning, we're like. I've been around, I've been a fixture around this district for a long time. You encouraged people to step up. And I remember when Ken Knox, um, you nominated him to run as a chair and. You instilled in him a way of like, again, he had no plan to do it. He was a very good chair, he was a very good worship. And he was like, when you're called, you, you go, step up. And when he left, there was a vacuum. And you were called and you, you stood up. And I know you, you were planning on a calm retirement and whatnot. But what you have given to this district over the last four years is. We, we, I can't, there's no good words to do it, but I couldn't have done this job without you. I don't think of this full committee. The tone of collegiality that took over very quickly when you assumed leadership was very good. Um, and I feel like our community is better for you being in this visible leadership position. And I really am grateful that I have the time to be with you. And I'm sorry, I'm hijacking your.
No, no, it's, it's fine. I think, I hope that there are six people staying. So the core is still here. And if you can continue with this tenor of dialogue. And, and respect for each other and meetings that are concise enough so people can go at home and connect with their families. I don't, I, I feel very privileged. Uh, unfortunately, I'm not a political person. I mean, I don't feel that comfortable in a political role, so I could only do it for four years. But I'm glad I had the chance. So now superintendent, you get to say something.
I have a whole big list here. Um, I just think, um, just to bring you back on what everybody said. I think that, um, we talked about this a little bit today at the conference we were at with, you know, a hundred fifty other superintendents and. I was talking about the significant change that this school committee was going to be going through and they said, oh my. And I said, yep, I buckled in. But I think that um, the tone that we've all set working together. I've worked with most of you for quite a while. Um, and I think the fact that we've grown together. And we're in a much more collaborative space as a leadership team, myself with. Um, and the central office administration with the school committee, it's a very different tenor. And it's a different way of meeting. And I think it's been really, really successful. So, um, and I think that goes to all of you. And that was my ending part. Now I'm gonna go to the dry stuff and then I'll go back. But uh, I just wanted to go over, uh, there was a lot that's happened in the last um, couple of weeks since we met. Um, it started with attending the board meeting at Simon's Rock to talk, um, we were invited to go over some school committee members. Um, and um, Julie and Lindy, myself, Jesse, Char, I, everybody was invited over. To talk about um, our partnership and the importance of it. And, um, and then there was a, a social gathering afterwards. And we got the chance to say why um, this partnership was so important to us and to our students. And um, I just received such uh, amazing feedback from members of the board. Who heard the why and heard the third grade student's story of I'm never going to college and that we weren't gonna let that be. A potential barrier um, in, in this district. And they were so on board with it and so supportive. So. Um, we heard that over and over and I think that's important to acknowledge. Um, so I, in the meantime, I had a nice ten days thing with COVID. So I run my command center um, on my couch for um, ten days. Um, which is why I'm in my own back row over here. Um, but I just wanted to say there was a significant number. I of regional school district planning board meetings. Um, there was an educational subcommittee, community outreach meeting, an intro meeting for the site visit. For the visioning, um, that's happening tomorrow. There was a full board meeting. Um, and tomorrow is a three and a half hour high school visioning site visit. Um, that Jesse, myself, um, have to partake in along with teachers and staff. So there's nine hours in the last week alone, minimum, that was just dedicated to regional scholarship planning board work on top of. So I think it's important to acknowledge that because there is no slowdown um, at all. Um, we had our first district-wide safety meeting um, with our internal safety team and our community partners about. Uh, our safety protocols, our practices, uh, trainings that we're gonna be doing um, and drill schedules. So um, there's a lot of work um, going into that. Um, I had the first meeting of the National Superintendent's Association Rural Ed Coalition cohort. Which was just fabulous. Um, we uh, had to uh, do our introductions with about twenty-seven. Superintendents from across the nation. And we all had to come to the table with what our key challenges. Um, are that we're facing in our communities and um, all of the work that we'll be doing, all the presenters and the research. That will be going over will be based on our common um, themes that we talked about. We started with um, a recently released report done by Hanover um, research. Which was a labor market analysis after COVID. Um, they listed key findings. Um, they talked about what the growing fields are and why. They talked about what the essential skills are for the workforce going forward that we're gonna need. They identified careers that we should be focusing on and things we should not be focusing on. Um. And these meetings are gonna be monthly with uh, uh, an opportunity to visit a rural school. One of the partners in this group in Texas in February. So that's pretty exciting. Um, we had another uh, joint virtual learning excursion session with Berkshire Hills. That's our group. Um, meeting um, last Thursday and I think there's another one coming up next week. Um, we got to talk with um, teachers and administrators from um, Mission Vista in California. About um, how they built culture and how they increased engagement. Uh, so it was, it was a really um. Interesting experience. We participated in the Division Six meeting, which our very own Mr. Sears is now the vice president of the. The um, Division Six MASC um, representative on Monday night. And what I wanted to say about that here, I was not in any position um, from my command center um, and the way my hair was to get on camera. But some of the things that they did discuss were that um, they had asked if anybody had invited Commissioner O'Reilly out here. And I had multiple times, he was not able to come. Um, and we didn't say that because I refused to put my camera on um, that night. But I think we should do a response because what they were saying was, um, what I heard from. The various superintendents and issues out there are, you know, give us some potential solutions. And I think we have. Some potential solutions. I think again, it goes back to, um, let's look for a way to incorporate a rural factor into the funding formula. You know, I mean, I think there are some very specific things that we should be requesting. So I think those of us who are still here, I know you're really happy with me saying this. We should put together a response with what they asked for from, from the um, suggestions the other night. Uh, we had our visioning session as Jane um, mentioned last night at Simon's Rock. Which they did a uh, early college one-on-one presentation. And even though some of us have been in this from the beginning. Um, everybody learned something tonight. So I thought that was really great. We had um, two students who uh, were there. And had talked about their experience um, in the early college program. And they were just incredibly articulate. And really excited about the opportunity. And, and um, I hope we have uh, more, more opportunity. To share their experiences with others. We, we're really figuring out that the only way to truly explain this is, is kind of a grassroots way of. Talking about it. And I'm sure Lindy will, will follow up on that. Um, Julie and I today started at five AM and did our second mass. Um, ready workshop, which is excellent work that we're doing um, with a hundred and fifty other. Um, people across the state on diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. Um, specifically today was dedicated to our own personal wives for wanting to do this work and how we feel. Um, you know, where, where you should be increasing equity within our own district. So it's been incredibly powerful. And we have a lot to share um, as we move through that. We also had, uh, I'm also on the um, Superintendent's Association Professional Development Committee. We uh, had a meeting Friday morning. Uh, and uh, I helped um, work with the entire team on developing the theme for this. July's um, annual institute and the subtopics. Um, and you know, figuring out what, what presenters were gonna bring them to um, continue to professionally develop all of us. Um, and so my final close is a thank you to all of those who are not going to be um, continuing on. For all your support and guidance in this, in this work. Um, I think I'm better at this job because of all of you. Um, and I hope that you will still be around and be present and. Um, you know, come in and be part of everything that we are doing because it's a pretty great place.
And I've called it and this list of things that you are doing and how you put yourself out there. In so many different ways that is so generous because it's going to make our school district much stronger. Because you have those connections and are have such a big input. It's, it's quite great.
Quick question, tickle my, one of my, my things, the Hanover report on future work study. Is there a way that we can get a copy of that?
I would be happy to share. It's very, very interesting. All of it because uh, you know, some of the things, what was really most fascinating to me is this is such um, recent data and. Interestingly, you know, some of the things that we're considering as part of our future work and, and if we were to consolidate our. Um, specific things that they said should not be where we should be investing in our future. So I think it's super important that people read that. And it's available research.
Yeah, I think it's.
I will send it.
Really quick, did it mention like, kind of like tech enabling, enabling type like AI virtual reality?
It's all technically driven where they, they really are saying, don't be looking at areas of agriculture and manufacturing. It's more the technological advancement of that. So things that people are, you know, wanna really be with the current um, current research. And, and this is after COVID, so it's pretty cool.
Can I do an editorial point?
You sure can.
When I was at the regional school district planning board and on the education subcommittee, I was pushing hard on like, it's not about the physical. Vote tech. Um, it's about the technology that's gonna be driving the industries in the future. Augmented reality, artificial intelligence, um, uh, virtual reality. That that's, we need to be masters of that, to be able to move forward. And I think if we can focus on the technology. The application of that technology in the laboratory for our students, it's really like internships for businesses in the area. Which you've been working on to be able to bring that insight and expertise where these businesses don't have to do it. I think we could be doing um, vote tech much cheaper and much more smartly for the future, much like you're researching. I really want that before.
It's, it's really great. Um, so I'd be happy to share it.
Piggybacking on that for just a half a moment, it's what Chris is doing. That's what our kids, yes. It's you're learning how to learn, you're learning how to think and you're working for the future. That's really. Whether you're underwater, up in space, whatever, for me, days. That's how we're preparing our kids for the future.
Yeah. Alright, um, I'm looking at seven fifteen here and we haven't had our M test before yet. So. Uh, do you have a curriculum uh, report too? Or are you just gonna do your own testing?
I think for the sake of time.
No, but you're perfect. If you have something.
I, I'll, I'll do, just real quickly, couple of days yesterday, we had a half day for students. It was a half day of professional development for teachers. It was very successful. Our elementary teachers and ESPs were in a responsive classroom training. Where they were continuing to fine tune their skill in uh, morning meeting. And then we started. skill in uh morning meeting, and then we started to introduce them to um thinking about teacher talk and the way you speak to children and and being very thoughtful and precise in the words that you use and how you use them. Um, and in both cases, we provided them with books as resources and um are having them read different chapters and then follow up with discussions. Um, at the secondary level, we had Murco Chardin, and again, at the beginning of the year, and he did another present uh presentation on universal design for learning, which um is a part of one of the goals for the Inclusive Academy that we're a part of. And so um one of the requirements of the academy is that we provide uh fifteen hours of PDP for what they call UDL one O one. And so that's uh where Murco is helping us. We also have had coaches in from Learning Acceleration Network that have been working with our middle school teachers um protocols on how to analyze student work. And uh we continue to meet all the requirements of the Inclusive Academy, which will be supporting us in our ongoing work for the next three years. So. That's my, oh, and Educating Our Eagles, the second edition is coming out probably next week, so look for that.
And if our curriculum committee are going to need?
Of course.
Yeah, well, once you get a Yeah, I just want to quickly, can you, what kind of enthusiasm are you seeing for teachers who are kicking and screaming about not having a PD that they wanted? Do you see anything changing there or?
No, I, I think that um a, a lot of it is about um communication and making clear why we're doing things that we're doing. And so, for example, one thing that teachers had really wanted was PD that would support um the licensure requirements for uh students with different learning needs. And um I think that when I explained to them that all the PDPs for UDL met that requirement, it helped them to see the validity and the, the use of it. So I think that's helped a lot. I, I think a lot of it is needing more communication about the why. Why we have chosen the things that we have chosen and for them to understand that these aren't things that are going away, that these aren't Julie Dolan's ideas for what is a best practice, that this is all research based and endorsed by the state, so.
Great, thanks. Uh, so we have a student services report in our packet and, but I was going to turn this time over to Jim DePisa because um he wanted to apprise us of something that has to do with student services. Um, so Jim, if you would like.
Thank you, for, thank you for remembering. Um. November seventh is the beginning of National School Psychologist Week. And uh I talked with Sandy the other day. And um we have two school psychologists, we have Cara Di Amico and Ashley Nguyen. And she said they're both terrific. And I think that as we talk about, you know, um learning for everyone, federal laws that will provide a free and appropriate education for all students. And a key part of that is the school psychologist's work, and I think that we should appreciate that, you know, these two women have decided to make their lives work to see that all children get an education that's appropriate to their needs. So it's, uh, I think we just should appreciate, take a moment to appreciate that.
Thanks, Gavin.
I made a motion to write a letter of thank you from the school committee.
Well, the problem with that is I always end up being, doing the writing, so I'm in.
I know.
Yeah, so I'm not going to do that. If we want to do a letter, I'd like a volunteer who would like to write the letter.
Jim?
I'll write the letter if someone will work, if you'll work with me on it, Jeff.
Sure, but I need a second, second.
All right. Uh, I don't think we need to vote that we have to do a letter, do we? All right, okay, so let's run through the list. We're going, oh, you're voting to whether you support a letter to the school psychologist. Jeff?
Yes.
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 Art?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Dame, yes, okay. So now, uh, how much time do you need for your M pass report?
Where it's quite, well, it's very, very
It's gonna take is, it depends on how many questions.
Adequate time, so everybody else who needs to speak maybe does. Okay, so it's Lindy's opportunity to bring us up to date.
She's coming up.
As the Mount Everett Early College.
Hello, so um I have a very quick update today. Um, mostly on my activities, sort of a report on what I've been doing and what I have coming up. Um, last week I attended the College Fair at E C C with um quite a few of our students. And I took the opportunity to speak to colleges in attendance um and ask them about their admissions policies with respect to early college. So that was really informative. Essentially what I learned is it's viewed very highly. Um, the state schools have a bit more of a formal understanding of Massachusetts early college implementation. Um, but other schools were really open to hearing about it and said that it sounded like something that would um that would increase students' um admission chances. Um, I also attended the New Monroe Select Board Meeting on Monday. Um, Jane is also in attendance, and we explained to the select board members as well as a few members of the audience there about the early college programs and the opportunities that go along with that. We also invited them to the visioning session, which took place at Simon's Rock last night. Um, I would say it was a success. Um, sort of on theme to what I've heard a few other times in this meeting already is that outreach and communication seems to be, um, it, it needs to happen in person. So there were a lot of flyers sent out, emails sent out, posters printed. Um, and the people who are attending in-person events are, are asked to personally attend. So um a huge theme there and a lesson for me as the early college and internship coordinator on how outreach could be more successful to all of our students and families. Um. The, a few things that we have coming up. October thirty first is the deadline for our Fund Code four sixty, part three, um which is additional funding for implementation of the early college program. Um, that is in good shape. I think it's done. We're just waiting to submit, and that's for twenty five thousand dollars. On October twenty eighth, our early college reporting data submission is due, and that's new student and course level reporting that um goes to the state in SIMS and SCS. As far as I know, that is complete and we're all good. The, the person who does uh coding here, so she didn't get any errors. So I think we're in good shape there. Um, I have a presentation to make to the Egremont Select Board on November first. So I'm looking forward to letting the select board members and anyone in the audience there know about the early college program and what it means for their students. Um, November ninth, there are, we have what I believe is called a virtual convening. It's held by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It's about a half day event. It's a working group session, and I get to pick some sessions to attend, and I plan on attending a session about English language learners to better understand how we can support our English language learners, especially in a college setting where translation is particularly difficult because the course material is at a faster pace and it's at a higher level. So um, I'm looking forward to learning more about that. Um, and last uh due today is our Innovation Pathways Application. I'm hopeful that we will get accepted. I'm still finishing it, even though it's due today, right now. And I think it's very much um connected to what I was just hearing in the room about um innovative and advanced technologies being really important to expose our students to and particularly difficult because we are on the opposite side of the state to some of the most highly rated and fabulous technical schools in the world. Um, but it's really tough to access them from here. So advanced automation, really virtual design, uh talking about new technologies like integrated optical circuits and cyber physical systems, and that's essentially just manufacturing systems that take advantage of artificial intelligence. Um, these are all things we hope to explore with our students through the Innovation Pathways Program and really emphasize that with the help of the state and the framework that goes around it. That's all I have for my report. There are questions?
Of course, one. Give them the fact, could, can we work with any of the colleges on the New York side?
That's a great question. Um.
Oh, yeah.
It is. Yes, um, and what's really cool about the Berkshire Innovation Center is they partner with um university colleges and universities across state lines. So I was thinking at the very least, we could connect with RPI through the Virtual Innovation Center, and they're present there.
Is that the one that Ben Stavney is?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So he's local enough. And then have you met at all with um Boyd? Boyd's
No.
Because Stephen Boyd is really gung ho on getting involved with education.
Okay.
Even though his child is up.
We remember, we remember Plasko Light primarily.
Oh.
They're all, they're on board.
I'll tell you more about the specifics later, but we do have a committed employer partner who um is the proximity makes it.
Oh, all right, great.
Can I just ask a question? Um, you made a really good point about like, you know, all the institutions on the eastern side of the state and the access that kids have. Is the hope that funding, that we're going to be doing yield trips, um uh virtual programming with like MIT or R P, uh R P I.
Yeah, W.
Uh, yeah, so that's the idea behind that.
Yes.
Cool, thank you.
All right. M cast annual, M cast report.
Good time to him.
Yeah. That's what starts. I hope you all have been reading in the newspaper what testing has shown. If you have a presentation, I'm sure it is, but.
All right, so that's just our intro slide. So next slide, please.
We're seeing.
Oh, yeah. You can make it both.
Yeah. Yeah. There, there.
Yeah. Great, very beautiful. So over the last four years, we have seen changes in how the test has been administered. So in two thousand nineteen, we had the full test for everybody. In two thousand twenty, we had no M test. In two thousand twenty one, we had a half test, grades three through eight, and full test at the high school level. In two thousand twenty two, we back to full test for all. Um, and in between all of that, I think even right before that, we completely changed our system of how um, you know, the accountability system um was going to be doing all the time. So it makes it super hard to compare the data, so. Um, that's just the beginning part of, of the joy. Okay, so, national reports. So um the, the data released by the Northwest Evaluation Association, which is now shortened their name to the N W E A, um focused on the students in grades three through eight and compared their current scores to pre-pandemic scores. It showed that uh all students, all typical students are behind where they normally would be. Um, and that it particularly affected our, um, we see uh the higher poverty schools um or students um uh than, than we would see um with students who attend more affluent schools. Um, the uh National Center for Education Statistics and um their commissioner Peggy Carr um basically acknowledged that there's um a, a lot of data that we're looking at, and that it's a very, very complex picture when we're talking about um what the academic losses look like. And uh we can all attest to some version of this that showing that there's a a definite rise in classroom disruptions, school violence, absenteeism, cyberbullying, mental health supports and anxiety. All of those things are um definitely um at a higher level since um, you know, the pandemic has, has taken over. Next slide, please. So what's important to, to still acknowledge and um is when the US Department of Education released our state and nationwide results, that Massachusetts still um into um two cat, two of the four assessments overall, we still received the highest score. Um, and, and the, of the remaining two, we were the second highest score. So when you average it all together, Massachusetts still is number one um in uh ranking across the nation. Um, but in general, as we all know, in every report that's out there, we have seen declines um on scores in overall um compared to two thousand nineteen. Um, and it totally makes sense. We can see the dramatic effect that um the pandemic has had on student learning. So what's the state saying? Um, same thing. Clearly, the pandemic years um have not been normal and therefore we can't be expecting that results are going to um not reflect that. And students' access to instruction was severely disrupted by both not only their own absences but their instructors' absences. So it's almost compounded with the amount of time. We heard that a little bit when we did our attendance report um last meeting. Um, our spring M test results were mixed with math and science actually um having gains where ELA was declining, and you'll see in the bottom bullet, especially in reading. Um, that's where we've noticed a severe um or, or in particular where the scores were, were lower than um they had been in previous years. Uh, and compared to um twenty twenty one, the percentage of students scoring or exceeding expectations and that have started to recover. So math is showing a little bit more of a recovery than, than in ELI. So Julie gets to do the fun part of the specifics. And you're it.
Okay, so um on this slide, you'll see that sort of the darker gray is the state and the lighter gray. What's wrong?
She can't really see it specifically.
Oh, sorry, as big as I could make it on this slide. So I will talk you through it, and then you will also have it sent to you from Winnet, right? So it goes state, then district, state, district, all the way down. And then it's the next column is the subject, and then the next column is the grade span. And then in twenty twenty one, the percentage of students that were meeting or exceeding expectations. And then in twenty twenty two, the percentage that were meeting or exceeding. And then what I think is for us, the bright spot and where we really want to look is the last column, which is the change in percentage points. And so if you look through, you're going to notice that we have mostly were below the state average for the percentage of our students that are meeting or exceeding. So that's the bad news, except for in high school, ELA and science, and those two categories were slightly above the state. Um, but what I think is the great news is when you look at that last column, we have shown far larger improvements than the state has. And I think that's what we need to focus on because growth is what we And I think that's what we need to focus on because growth is what we need to see. So on the very top line, grades three through eight in math, the state between the two years saw an increase of six percentage points. We saw an increase of 11 percentage points. So that's double the state average. That is something to celebrate. And it, it's hard to not think that a year with the new math program we've been using has not had some direct impact on our MKS results. Because we saw at that end of the year data last year, that it had a direct impact. And so now MKS is, you know, validating that that was true. When you go down to ELA, even though as nationally and the state have recognized that ELA has been a decline for all students, we didn't decline quite as much as the state average. So that's good. I also like to think that we're making progress towards changing that. We just purchased a new ELA program for grades six, seventh and eighth. And we are in the process of doing the search to implement a new program in the fall of 2023 for grades K through five. And the way that, you know, programs are now written and the fact that you can have so much research in advance about what is actually a high quality resource. You know, you know, you're getting quality when you buy something now, which 10 years ago you didn't. So I think we can count on the fact that that's going to make a difference in those scores. So when you get to science, again, if we're doing better than the state substantially, so in fifth grade, the state had an increase of one percentage point and in eighth grade as well. Whereas for us in science, we increased 17 percentage points in fifth grade and nine percentage points in eighth grade. So that's a huge win, particularly when we're talking about how important it is for our students to be strong in the sciences and technology. And then the high school, where you see the map, where the state went down two points, we actually increased 10 points. And with ELA, the same thing, the state went down six points, but we increased four points. For high school science, we can't really compare anything because they changed that exam again to the point where it's not apples to apples. So the state didn't even publish a comparison there. All right, next one. So this is looking at our grades three through, case three through eight math scores. 2019, 21, 22. So really looking at, and this is what the state really looked at, how students were doing pre-pandemic, how they were doing during the pandemic and then what kind of rebound they've had after the pandemic. And, and that's where we're showing some really good numbers compared to the state. So in this instance, we're really following the trend that the state is seeing in math, particularly in this grade span where the students are statewide, making up 50% of what was a question in the pandemic. We actually have made up more than that. But statewide, that's what it was. And if you look at specific grade levels, some grade levels, we even had greater gains, but the state looks at bands like this. They look at three through eight and then they look at high school separately. And there's a very important reason for that, which we will get to later. Next slide. So here's the ELA scores. Again, we followed the state, the pattern of the decrease in the percentage of students meeting expectations is the same as what the state is seeing. Next one. So high school math scores. So in pre-pandemic, 65% of our high school kids were meeting or exceeding in math. Then during the pandemic, we dropped to 38%. Since the pandemic, we've rebounded up to 48%. So we're going in the right direction. The reason that I said it's important, and this is why I think the state separates three through eight versus high school is, and I'm not sure, you may already know this, but in order to graduate from high school on the 10th grade exam, you don't have to be needing or exceeding. You have to be at least partially meeting. So when you look at this, if I looked at those percentages in 2019, 96% of our students got what they needed in order to graduate. And 21, 89% of our kids got what they needed to graduate. And then we bounced back up to 88% post pandemic. So that's a really big rebound when you look at it that way. That we were only off one percentage point. Then you can go to the next one. ELA. Same thing. You know, we see that we were high, we dropped a bit, we're moving back up now. So it, it's following the state trends and we're moving in the right direction and we're still, you know, in ELA in 2019, 100% of our kids met the graduation requirement, 92 and 92 the past two years. And of course, that doesn't mean they can't take it again. They have the opportunity to continue to take it, but. So it's going to take us a while is what all this shows. And this is just a quote from James Pryser, the Massachusetts Secretary of Education. And it's important that we're doing the accelerated learning that we, the structures that we got from the accelerated roadmap. And these are also things that we're getting a lot of support through the inclusive academy as far as multi-tiered systems of support and helping us to implement those in a way that can better meet our students' needs. As you know, we try, we tried to do some programs like over vacations last year and stuff. And unfortunately, we didn't have interest from the community. But, you know, we have expanded our summer learning and we have increased our early literacy. So we're doing many of the things that the Secretary of Education spoke about there. Next one. So this is, these are not the only ways that we're doing this, but here are just some of the highlights of things that we're doing to improve our students' schools. Help close the gaps and make up what we have lost. So as I said, we, you know, we've utilized the accelerated roadmap to focus on social emotional learning, to really dig into attendance issues. We have been using grant money to purchase all manner of high quality materials and coaching. We have been able to pay for everything out of grant funds last year and this year. And I just saw a new grant come up that I'm going to write to try and pay for our new ELA for the fall. We're participating in the inclusive academy. And I didn't put up there, but, oh, I did. Learning Acceleration Network, both of which are supporting all of this. And then of course, providing the late buses for the students so that they can stay after school. And at the high school, the teachers now stay a certain number of days a week after school so that they can support students as well as it's happening in the homework center. So I'm sure there are plenty of other things I haven't thought about off the top of my head, but we have tried to implement an institute, every possible thing that we can to make gains. And that, that is it for our presentation.
Nancy? I have two questions. One is, is some of what's having to be rebuilt student confidence in their capacity to learn?
Confidence, stamina, all of those things, absolutely.
Yeah. And then I forgot the other question.
I mean, this isn't, I think the important thing is that this is just our general philosophy anyway. You know, if, if this isn't about, for us, I, I don't think, it's not about the test per se, right? This is what we think is the right thing to do for students, period. You know, these supports and how we support students and how we work at improving achievement. So to me, and I think this is, this is the philosophy we share as administrators is, you know, we're not interested in necessarily teaching to the test. But if we do high quality teaching, we have high quality materials that we support the students, you know, and meet their needs where they're at, the test will fall into place, you know? So I mean, yes, this is a point in time, but we're actually looking at benchmark assessments in real time to make those curricular adjustments. And I think that's super important to remember.
Yeah.
Compliments to the staff and the administration for really the percentage changes and benchmarking in the state is impressive, right? And I see that to be provocative and to thinking more future. It is likely in our lifetimes, we're going to see another novel virus, climate change is accelerating, you know, diseases, permafrost, released pathogens of modern.
How careful, Jeff.
I know. This is, but the challenge I want to think of is like, how do we, how do, what are the systems? So that the next time we're faced with this and we have to cloister in our homes again, because it's likely this could happen. How do we minimize the loss of learning the next time around? And what is the bold vision and the bold execution that these really great educators that you guys represent a portion of? Where do we go from here? And you don't have to have the answer right now, but I think as a parent in the district, like and hopefully a grandparent in the district someday and whatnot, like we want to see that, like, how are we building resilience?
All right. And that goes right along with all the focus on social emotional learning around country.
Well, I think, I think also too, it seems to me that some of that also is experience. I mean, I think I'm going to assume that you guys have developed a staggering amount of experience in the last three years.
We know how to teach online now.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Well, that's what I'm saying, because it's not the same. And I think that, that, that I think a lot of times, at least in my experience, faculty resilience is as important, you know, if you go into something without confidence and going. Right. I think that unfortunately or unfortunately, it seems to me that you guys have a lot of. And that would definitely.
I have one more aspect that I hope I can help work on, and that is parent belief in the value of education. Because it's fallen off nationally that it matters that you learn and you use your mind well. And so focusing on getting to parents that it's worth putting in the extra effort to keep your kid motivated. So that would be a fun project. Remind.
I have something to think about. Okay, Bonnie?
I think Jeff, you brought up something where I think we could be proactive in a way. And really establishing maybe a committee, not saying it's necessarily a school, lessons learned. Because I think that to pre-pandemic, I mean, Chris, how many people do we have who weren't connected to anything and parents who didn't know anything? We had a learning curve where I think there are a lot of things, you know, like what we did with the, the health group and all. And I think we should capture that because certain of those things, I think, should be built into our district. So I would suggest, you know, looking at that. And I think it has to be a committee that goes to people who are not on the school committee anymore in a few weeks, you know, and to parents and to now create, I think, we have to do something that we have to address and not let it go.
That's good, Bonnie. I'd like to think though, that that's kind of, you know, the lesson that we've learned and are, are incorporated into our plan moving forward, right? That when we look at our action steps and our a lot of what we have learned is incorporated into either what we need to continue to put professional development forward on or what we need to study. I think I, I'm hopeful that people feel that way, that this is that we're taking, when we reassess how it went and what we've learned, we're, we're synthesizing that into our next plan to move forward, right? We're always thinking like.
I think you, that you, which that you already, you know what I mean? Handwriting, but that's, but you are totally immersed in this. Think when I hear what Jeff's saying is, I believe there's a lot that could be done in terms of educating beyond so that people, you know, understand it. I'm not being particular articulate about it, but I think.
I'm gonna, we're meandering here.
It's something you should talk about, about how to, how to get, do some kind of survey on what if you learn kids, what if you learn and not necessarily, but I think there are a lot of.
All right. Yeah. So the next thing is our, I think this is just FYI then.
No.
Budget calendar or do we have to approve it?
Oh, well, for, for the budget calendar, I think that we're putting this out here for consideration. Again, the budget calendar is based off of either what we're required to do via the regional agreement. It's almost a little universal design for learning, right? And then we work backwards so that the budget calendar is developed. I just wanted to have this here so that on those who are going to be here on their radar of what it's going to look like. Because we also needed to make some changes in the school committee calendar because we already know that we're going to have to make some moves just with the way the calendar is laying out. What, what time we're going to need to put together appropriate budget materials? So our proposal, we wanted to look ahead, right? And, and make those adjustments so people already know what their scheduling ahead of time. The two things that are important, so it's kind of two items at the same time. After looking at this budget calendar, it caused us to look at the school committee calendar, which would be, we're changing the February 2nd meeting to February 9th because we need that time. Yeah. Again, the, the governor's budget isn't even going to come out until that fourth Wednesday. So you need more time in the second to, to start to put together some information. The other one, and this is, this is interesting because those are people who end up being on the finance subcommittee. We always have two meetings scheduled, one in the week of February 16th, and we're never ready. We actually need to go into the vacation usually to do the, the preliminary budget. We don't have enough time between the meetings to put that work together. So we already know that the 16th, it hasn't, we've never made it in the last three years. We might, we'll just cancel it now and say, just so people know, you know, you don't see me ever on a plane for the February break because I gotta be here for a better time, you know? So that's a reminder, we'll just say it upfront now so people know.
So I'll entertain a motion for the calendar changes. Second. All right. And any further questions to Beth about the calendar changes? All right. Jeff?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Bonnie? Bonnie? Dennis?
Yes.
And Jane, yes. So we have an revised calendar. It's very smart to make it more user friendly now. While we're talking about calendar, before I forget, first, I'm concerned, we still have the November first workshop meeting, even though some people will have to be looming in because they'll be in Hyannis in their hotel rooms or they have to be at home. So unless there's an idea that we should cancel that because of the.
Will be away.
Well, Bonnie will be in Hyannis. Will you be there already, Dennis? And Beth will be there. So and Nancy has to be virtual. And the rest of us can come in. And hopefully, I will ask Charles and Jesse to readvertise with their newsletter and see if we can get some participation and maybe send out the survey a second time so we can see if we can get some results. But just wanted to take this moment since we were talking about calendar. That we're still keeping that on the calendar for now. Good?
Okay.
Did we, we like, you know, I don't know, it seems given what we had hoped to accomplish.
Well, I think it's a good question. We did advertise it in the newsletter that we were doing it. It was a desire while we were still together to have a conversation. But it doesn't mean we have to do it. I mean, if we wanted to decide tonight that we're, we have, we have to postpone it and hand it over to the next committee. I'm not opposed to that. I just want to be clear while we're all here. So we cannot do it any other night that week. And then we're up to election.
I think we should go for it. I think it's really important to look at that plan. And I think that we're the group to do it. And it'll be very difficult to hand it over to the next grouping.
Okay, thank you for your opinion, Laura. I'm happy to look at it and do the best we can and see what feedback we get from the community. And if it doesn't accomplish anything, we made an effort.
Maybe a lot of stuff for us.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, there are a few of us.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so I don't hear, I understand what you're saying, Bonnie, and if you can't call in.
No, 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 I just wanted to get a sense of the group.
Yeah, okay. All right. So the subcommittee reports, finance did not meet. Thank you to Community Relations and Public School Advocacy for putting out a fantastic piece of writing and beautiful piece. I got it in the mail yesterday.
Did you get it?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, but I saw it when my client, I was like, that's it.
Yeah. And Policy Subcommittee has not met. Personnel from the state has not built in grounds. Arthur, you had a meeting today. Would you like to comment?
Yeah. We met our new building and facilities person, whose name is
John Borwork.
John Borwork. He's getting up to speed with everything going on in all three schools. There was a big assist on safety in all three schools. They're creating an action plan to start implementing. And he already is implementing some things that we have money in the budget for. Some of the other things they're trying to figure out and that went to next year's budget. So that was reassuring. The HVAC project. We're still working on it. Because of manufacturing problems, there is a delay in getting this implemented. Though it's, he has a meeting with the person on Tuesday and we'll see where it goes from there. But best said, money wise, we're locked in until sometime in the summer.
Yeah. Throughout the fiscal year, for sure.
So we're still in good shape there. It's just taking longer than anticipated. So that's all I have.
Quick question. You solve life in the HVAC though, to get us through this.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
And this is Brenda, Intended Evaluations Subcommittee. I just wanted to make a comment.
Just now that I'm past COVID and surgery and all of that, I'll try to get up to speed as soon as possible. Talked to Bonnie and I've talked. We'll talk to Beth soon, I hope.
Glad you're feeling better. You certainly had a rotten experience. Which you didn't deserve. And other subcommittees have not met, so we're on future agenda items. Does anybody want to add anything to that list? Especially anybody departing, want to ask some work get done when you're not here? I guess that's not very fair.
Not really.
All right.
Hopefully we're gonna get it done while you guys are here.
Yeah, well, yes. And I'll be watching. I'll take a motion to his government. All right, Bonnie, who's second? From Jeff, Jeff?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jane, yes. Did you notice I said yes several single times?
Yes. Very impressed.
Very impressed.
And for the people that aren't here, here's this lovely plate that Jane made for for me, and I appreciate it. And unto the best for everybody that's not going to be here in forever. I hope everything goes well and everybody's.